Oh, she's, I saw her. Dana, are we, we're sharing? Okay, this is not it, okay. Fourteenth? No, she just emailed us a agenda earlier today. But all she emailed us was this.
Yeah, there's no PowerPoint or anything.
No, Dana said this wasn't it.
They're still talking.
I mean, I'm sure, like Mick's not here, right? Well, yeah, that's what I mean, that's probably where he is.
Could be worse.
Yeah.
That's actually pretty cute.
Yeah.
What thing? Oh shit. I don't know, I don't know what I'm gonna do with her, this one right here, this one right here. Oh, we were back there doing good things. Whew, I gotta catch my breath. Yeah, we are. Good evening, it is Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota for a special board meeting. We'd like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the land of the Minnewakington Dakota people. Minnewakington means dweller of Spirit Lake. Our first item on the agenda is our roll call. Dana?
Eric Tesmer.
Here.
Louise Hines.
Pat Driscoll.
Here.
Melinda Dole.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
Simi Petneak.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here. Next, will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, it's three point O, and that is the approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
A move, second.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Eric. Any discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approves, motion is carried. Next on our agenda is four point O, and that's discussion items. Four point one is the school resource officer's contract with the city of Woodbury. That will be introduced this evening by our superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. The purpose of this meeting this evening is to consider the next steps following the suspension of the contract between the city of Woodbury and South Washington County schools that has been in place since two thousand and nine. The contract provided one school resource officer at both Woodbury and Eastridge High Schools. Through this contract, the school district was able to contract the school resource officers for a total approximate cost of a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the year twenty twenty-three. In a meeting on Friday, September eighth, with the city administrator, the public safety director, and the city of Woodbury's attorney, we were informed that as a result of the closed session on Wednesday, September sixth, the city council had made the decision to unilaterally suspend the contract and remove the officers from our schools. The city administrator shared that the council did not feel that the city could fulfill the contract in good faith, knowing the personal risk that the SROs would be taking. The city council did express, he shared that the city council did express different feelings about providing patrol officer, patrol officers for school events like football games, and agreed that that service would come at a no cost to the district. Our role at this meeting on Friday really was to listen. We had not been invited to the closed session, so it was to listen and ask clarifying questions. The offer on the table remained to suspend the contract and offer free services at large events, again, like football games. As we were meeting, the conversations between the city of Woodbury and the school district continued. Public Safety Director shared that the current SROs would continue to work their Monday through Friday schedule and not be on regular patrol. The goal in the interim would be to keep them in the area. In addition, the hope would be to work out a plan to have regular walkthroughs through the schools, to still have a presence at the schools, and provide patrols through the area. This is an option that the school board will need to discuss this evening, as we were not at the table to make decisions or to negotiate. The school district, at that same time as we were talking about options, asked if there was a way that we could continue to have them at school and not have them physically intervene. This would allow them to continue to be present and building the important relationships that are at the foundation of our work. In the event of an altercation or a crisis, the district would call for an outside officer and would not have the SRO intervene at all. We would also be open to altering the contract as it stated for the large events that the city spoke about. While both sides, as we wrapped up the meeting, talked about those potential options, it was not the venue or the time, because the interested parties were not at the table, and the purpose again was for the city to provide us with the guidance that came out of the city's closed session. It was shared by the city administrator that his hands were tied because the city council gave him clear direction on that decision. The school district was provided no information from a city official until Tuesday, September fifth, at twelve oh seven P M. The closed session was on September sixth. We value the work of our SROs and the role they play in our schools. We thought that our school district was different, and that our previous work clarifying roles and responsibilities demonstrated how we have worked together. We wish that we could have been part of the conversation so that together we could have transitioned to a plan that did not just have our SROs leave our schools with a one-day notice. I believe that we can still work together to come up with a solution that keeps our students and their safety at the heart of our work. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mick Walzberger, our district attorney, to talk about the options that the school board has related to the suspended contract.
Good evening. Can you, is this on here? I can't tell. Okay. I don't have a light, one way or another, okay, I'm on. All right, as was mentioned, the decision was made in closed session, and that's unfortunate. The day of the closed session for the city council, I had a conversation with the city attorney. I... This one's not. I'll slide over to here. Get a little further away, that's a good way to accomplish that. Making me move further away. All right, so as I mentioned, I had a conversation with the city attorney on the sixth of September, the day that the city council is meeting in closed session. I shared my concerns about the meeting taking place in closed session, specifically that there was not a legitimate legal basis for going into closed session. I also shared my concern that nobody had made any kind of threats of litigation at that point that would warrant a closed session, and that this is precisely the kind of action that should happen in closed session like this, so everybody can hear, you know, give and take in terms of the factors that are considered and are fully informed of the decisions. After the meeting in closed session, the council itself did not articulate its decisions. It didn't come back and take action, so we're relying on what the city administrator, public safety director, and city attorney informed us at the meeting on Friday. And they told us that the actions of the council here were really based on a change in the law. And that change in the law took effect on July one of this year. And it's unclear why the council did not act until the first week of school, more than two weeks, two months later, given that the law took effect on July one, but nonetheless, it, that was the explanation given to us, that there was a change in the law. I want to review for you what the change in the law was, because there's a lot of confusion about it. There were really three relevant amendments to the law. And the first amendment, and these all occurred again in twenty twenty-three, the first amendment deals with prone restraints. And it essentially says that not only school district employees, but now also school resource officers and security personnel and police officers contracted with the district are prohibited from using prone restraints. And a prone restraint is simply a face-down position. You're not allowed to put students in a face-down position. So that's our first change in the law. And that shouldn't be something that's problematic, you know, for officers who are working with kids. The second amendment is what I'm going to call no compressive restraints. So there is an amendment to the law which prohibits school district employees, agents, and school resource officers, security personnel, and police officers who are contracted with the district from using any compressive restraint techniques. And specifically, you're not allowed to use a physical hold that restricts or impairs a student's ability to breathe, restricts or impairs a student's ability to communicate distress, places pressure or weight on a student's head, throat, neck, chest, lungs, sternum, diaphragm, back, or abdomen, or results in straddling a student's torso. Those are all prohibited. And the concern from the officer's side is that, you know, if you come in and, and put a bear hug on a student to try to break up a fight, you're putting pressure on the sternum and on the back, right? And so that's a concern. But there is an exception to the law that still continues to apply, and that's the reasonable force exception. And there was a change to that, but it still exists. What the law says is that reasonable force is still permitted. And the amendment to the law says a school district employee, a school bus driver, or other agent of the district, which could be interpreted to include an SRO, in exercising their lawful authority may use reasonable force when it's necessary under the circumstances to restrain a student to prevent bodily harm or death to the student or others. It used to say that you were allowed to use reasonable force to restrain a student or prevent bodily harm or death. And so it's been restricted. You're only allowed to restrain now when bodily harm or death is a possibility. And so you can't just intervene physically for the purposes of restraining. SROs may no longer use force for the sole purpose of, for example, restraining a student who is damaging property, causing a disturbance, or acting out in any other way that doesn't present a risk of harm of, or a threat of bodily harm to self or others, or death. Now, again, to be clear, you can still use reasonable force, student has a weapon, knife, gun, something like that. And putting aside some of the hyperbole that we hear, I, I want to break down and have you think about this a little bit. What do we want people doing in the schools? First of all, all school staff are subject to these same standards or higher standards. We're not asking SROs to be held to a higher standard. The legislature hasn't asked SROs to be held to a higher standard than what has long been the case for school district employees. And what the legislature is saying is, when you're in the school building, you gotta act kind of like the school folks do. And you have to be held to standards that say, we're not going to physically intervene when there's just potential risk of property damage, when there's disruptive conduct. And if it was your own child, I want you to think about if it's your own child, and your child had a bad day, had a mental break, had special needs, and was damaging property, do you want a police officer physically intervening to address that? Or would you want some other means of intervention, if possible? Again, we all know if there's bodily harm threatened or death, absolutely, we want the officer to be able to intervene. But that's what the law is really saying. So that's, that's where the changes come into play. By the way, I want to mention as well that not only are school district employees held to the same standard, they actually have a higher standard. They can't physically intervene unless there's imminent bodily harm or death being threatened. So I want to talk now for a minute about the contract, because you heard that the city council has made a decision in closed session to suspend indefinitely the contract that is between the, the city and the district. And it is a legally binding contract to provide SRO services through the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. As Superintendent Nielsen said, it's been in place since two thousand and nine. It renews automatically unless either party gives notice that they're terminating it. And they have to give that notice by March thirty-first, with termination effective January one of the following year. Now, when we're told that the contract is, was suspended, we asked at that meeting for how long? And nobody knows the answer to that. And so an indefinite suspension of a contract is essentially a termination of the contract. The city is, in short, unilaterally, meaning without us being at the table, having a say in the matter, and willfully, meaning intentionally, breaching a contract under which they have legal obligations. At this time, the district has not threatened, and to my knowledge, has not even considered legal action against the city. Rather, up to this point in time, the, the district has considered and focused on collaborative solutions. But it is my job to outline for you what your legal options are. The district certainly could sue the city to compel specific performance of the contract, and I do believe you're highly likely to prevail if we do that. The district could also sue for compensatory damages. And given the willful nature of the breach of contract, I believe you could also recover attorney's fees if you were to bring that kind of a claim, because they naturally flow from an intentional and willful breach of contract. As part of the lawsuit, the district could reasonably assert the council members have acted in bad faith, because they knowingly took an action, which they knew to be in excess of their lawful authority. They're bound by a contract, and they're just saying, we're gonna walk away from it, even though we're legally bound by it. That's a problem. And I would note that if I were a council member, I personally would be concerned. I would be concerned that if a tragedy happened in the schools, and an SRO was not there and could have avoided it or mitigated it, that I would be held personally liable for a decision to knowingly act in excess of my authority and remove those officers from the school. That's a problem, and I would be concerned about that. As stated in my earlier communication, or in earlier communications from the district to the city, the city didn't consult with the district before making decisions. Instead, they met in closed session, and, and we didn't have any opportunity to address concerns or offer solutions. We, as Superintendent Nielsen said, we offered the solution of saying, okay, there'd be no physical intervention from officers. We, we don't expect them to physically intervene in our schools. Our staff will continue to accept the risk that they face every single day, while the officers don't have to do that. We're taking them out of harms way while our staff continue every day to be in harms way. And that was unacceptable to them. In making that request, we let them know that, to our knowledge, we had not had a single incident in the last school year in which an officer had been involved in a physical intervention with students. We also emphasized that, to us, the value and important and central role of the SRO is relationship building. It's not there to be a heavy. It's not there to physically intervene. It's so much more than that. And I wanted to say too, I know the administrators very much value the SROs who are there. They are doing a great job, there is great relationship building that's happening. There's great work between the administration and the SROs. Students have a level of trust with them. They perform a very, very valuable role. But that is a far different role than being the heavy or being the physical intervenor. And contrary to what sometimes you might hear in the media, officers, SROs, are not the first responders for student behaviors at school. It is the staff every single time. Officers aren't. They get called in, of course, when we have things like weapons. And they do, they're trained, they have knowledge and skills we don't have, that our staff don't have. But they're not the first responders. The staff are always, always the first responders, other than a weapon situation. So unfortunately, we were told that the council had considered that option specifically and had specifically rejected it. We were told that the officers would be willing to conduct regular walkthroughs, and I want to talk to you about the legal implications of that, meaning regular walkthroughs of the schools. So first of all, it was kind of presented as a take it or leave it. You know, this is what we're willing to do, we're not negotiating, talking, there are no other options. As Superintendent Nielsen said, the city administrator said that the direction he received from the council was clear. There was no room for discussion or negotiation of other options. But the, so having officers regularly walk through the buildings, why is that a problem? Our school buildings are not open to the public. They're open to our employees, agents, and contracted folks, like SROs, to come through. And we can't just allow officers to walk through the building without opening up that forum, at least arguably, to allow other members of the public, the media, to just come into our buildings and walk through. There's no special right of an officer just to walk through our buildings. And on top of that, it wholly defeats the purpose of the SRO program. Having officers who don't know the kids come in, we don't have the relationship building that the whole SRO program is founded on. So for, from our standpoint, legally, that doesn't make sense. From a practical standpoint, it doesn't make sense. And we'd also note that there, it can create an intimidating environment. Officers who kids don't know, just walking through the halls. And the Office for Civil Rights, which is a division of the U.S. Department of Education, has repeatedly told schools that we're not supposed to be using officers, or including SROs, in a heavy-handed manner, or in any way that creates a, an environment of intimidation that might deter students from attending school. They're there to address crimes, deter crimes, and again, do that through relationship building with the students. So we don't want to get on the opposite side of, of OCR and have a complaint brought against the district. There was also an offer to have officers present at special events like football games. And legally, I have no objection to that. I think that that's, from a district standpoint, that that is a sensible option, again, if they're willing to do that. And in fact, we would call nine-one-one and have officers respond in the event of a crime in any event. I want to go back, I missed one thing I was going to mention too about the, having the officers walk through the hallways. One other concern I would have if I were an SRO or an officer is, is that just a subterfuge? Where we're saying, yeah, we're not contracting with you, but yet you're in our buildings, sort of as in our agents anyway? I'm not sure how that would shake out for officers in any event, if that puts them in any better position. The district's focus in my communications has been on safety and well-being of the students. Again, the relationships built with SROs and their relationships with students. And we want to continue to focus on that and the safety and well-being of students. There are some other options you could consider, in addition to what the city has presented. One option, you could accept termination of the contract. You could end the SRO program altogether. You could hire private security. I'm not recommending that, because from everything I hear, the SRO program works. They have relationships with kids. Takes time to build those relationships. Those folks on the ground, in the buildings, from everything I'm hearing, are doing a great job. And so is that, that's not something I'm recommending, but certainly my job to present that to you as an option, since the city is saying, we're walking away from the contract for some indefinite period of time. You certainly have that option if you want it. You can sit tight and see if the council reconsider's. I have no idea what their appetite is or what they may or may not do. Doesn't sound like a special session is on the horizon. A lot of these cities who have decided to take this kind of an action, you know, they, they may be reconsidering based on financial implications and maybe a, a different interpretation of law than what they first saw, and what they first heard coming out there. So I, I think that's certainly an option. And bottom line is, you shouldn't be paying for any services you're not receiving. So if they're not providing services during a period of time, they're not providing services, the district shouldn't be paying for those. So those are my comments. I'm happy to answer questions, I'm sure you may have some questions about the contract, about the new laws that went into effect. If you have other options that you've thought of, that you'd like to, you know, bounce off me in terms of a, from a legal standpoint, I'm happy to consider those and entertain those. And again, hopefully, we can move forward in a more collaborative manner than what's happened so far.
Yes, ma'am, I got a few. Sir, you talked about some of the intricacies of law. I dispute some of it. I don't know that it really forwards this discussion to, to talk about some of the things I dispute, but, you know, you're indicating some of the intricacies such as prone restraint, and, and that you, I guess your interpretation is that perhaps it doesn't open up officers or, or SROs to as much liability as, as perhaps the city of Woodbury thinks. I beg to differ. Most fights or physical altercations that begin on one's feet end up on the ground. And the experience that I've had is that people end up on their stomach, inevitably putting them in a prone restraint. So I think that this is at the crux of the issue as far as the city's concerned for the individual SROs in the building. And to go along with that, you mentioned that last year, there wasn't any, I guess, physical altercations in the two high schools. That's great. I'm happy to hear that. I don't think it's good policy moving forward to say, well, we didn't have any issues last year. We don't know what's gonna happen the next year. So to me, that's an irrelevant point. If, moving on. Teachers accepting additional risks. You said that teachers were okay accepting additional risks. Are you certain of that? Did you confer with the teachers in general? I have a hard time believing that teachers are okay accepting additional risk to get involved in, in potential physical altercations. Very hard time believing that. Secondly, or moving on. The entire, this entire situation creates a gray area. It creates a gray area for civil and criminal liability, not just for the city in general, but for the individual officer. It, it, it's irrelevant, I mean, you could, you could talk about, well, we don't think this is going to happen if this particular situation arises, and we don't think this is gonna happen if this particular situation arises. But what it does is it leaves extreme question marks in the minds of those individual officers that are in the building, as well as the risk managers for the city. And that's why this happened. Now, as far as the process goes, you know, the law was signed, I guess, into law on, on July first, like you said, and why did it take that long? I have no idea, I don't know how lawyers work, I guess they took a while to figure this one out. Part of the problem was, is that this particular statute was buried in the bowels of the Minnesota education bill. Part of the problem was, is that this particular statute was buried in the bowels of the Minnesota Education Bill, probably for a reason, so nobody would find it. And it probably took that long for them to find it and then try to unravel what it meant exactly. Irregar, or regardless, the process is, okay, maybe problematic. Maybe it would have been nice if we would have been brought to the table, but we weren't. We weren't brought to the table. You can, you can discuss and you could talk about why that was a problem, or why that should or should not have happened, but the reality is, is it happened. My concern is this. Right now, you've got the city of Woodbury, okay, who's been in partnership with District 833 for, since 2009 at least, and we've had a good partnership in this regard. I think that it is prudent for us to understand, okay, that in order to keep that partnership and that relationship at least viable for the years moving forward, because this is a temporary legislature, no doubt, and perhaps things will change. Hopefully, they will. And as we move forward, I think it's important to keep this relationship intact. So before we make any kind of decisions, punitive as such, toward the city of Woodbury, or decisions that might cause a greater rift between the two entities, I think it's prudent for us to understand where the responsibility for this bill lies. And the responsibility for this bill lies, first of all and foremost, at the feet of whatever stage-one thinkers decided to put it together and put the specific language they did in the bill. Secondly, with whoever voted for it, most likely without properly reading it and understanding it before they voted for it. And then by the individual that signed it into law, okay? And the reason why I say this, or the reason why I bring this up, is not to bash a particular political party or whoever's running the state government. The reason why I say this is because it's very important that we understand this, okay? Because this type of thing gets dumped on us at the local level. It gets dumped on the school boards, the individual municipalities, for us to deal with. And it's not, we didn't create this problem. The city of Woodbury didn't create this problem. District 833 didn't create this problem. Lawmakers in St. Paul created this problem, and we need to understand that. So before we go making rash decisions that are going to cause decades-long, perhaps, rifts, that are going to, at the end of the day, cause our schools to be less safe, our teachers to be less safe, our students to be less safe, we need to understand where the responsibility for this belongs. It's very, very important we understand that. And I mean, everybody in this room needs to understand that. Legal counsel needs to understand that, and the greater voting base in this state needs to understand that. Uh, I don't know if... A lot of questions, lots to take in. I can, I can refresh. I can refresh. Uh, prone restraint, like I talked about to begin with. These are, these are volatile situations. They're dynamic. We have no idea where they're going to go. It's, it's just, look, I can't accept, it's too easy to, to, well, we haven't had any, uh, physical altercations in the schools. You know, prone restraint is defined as this legally. Look. These situations, when they go south, they go south, okay? And who's on the hook when they go south? We all know who's on the hook when they go south, okay? This is why the city of Woodbury doesn't want their people in the school system. So I, I don't know what you have to, I guess, respond to that, or I don't even know if that's a question, but...
All right, Mick. Are you ready?
Absolutely. All right, Board Member Tesmer, thank you for your comments. So first of all, you stated that you disputed the interpretation of law. I didn't actually hear anything that was different in what you said than what I said, in terms of what the law says, except that you talked about most fights end up with somebody on the ground, and people end up on their stomach, and that's a prone restraint. And that's not true in the school system, sir. It's simply not. There's no evidence to support that that's true. It might be true out in the community at large. But again, we had, it's relevant that nobody, no officer physically intervened last year, because we don't have that happening in the schools. And I'm proud that we don't have that happening in the schools.
But, okay, but...
Also, hang on, let me, you, I give you an opportunity, let me respond.
You're right, you're right.
Also, when we talk about prone restraint, keep in mind, there's still that exception for reasonable force. You know, if it's bodily harm or death going to occur, there's still that exception. And so, and there are wonderful publications. I'd encourage you. The Minnesota County's Insurance Trust put out a wonderful publication, very balanced, in terms of what can and can't be done, and there's lots of hypotheticals in there. And it talks about, for example, a situation where two students are engaged in a fight, and how that does present a risk of bodily harm, and how you may use the reasonable force exception to intervene there. And so without, and again, they talk about the Attorney General's opinion and how that is binding, and that you can rely on that. So this is not me. This is an agency that represents counties across the state. It ensures them. It says, if you're held liable, M.C.I.T. is the one who pays the bill. And that's who's writing this and saying, we have protections there for both their dollar payment and for the officers. You said that I said it was okay with teachers, that they're accepting additional risk. That's not what I said. What I said is that teachers face that risk every day. They go into work and they face that risk every day. And you're saying that officers should face some lesser risk than the teachers do? And on top of it, I said that teachers have a higher legal standard they have to meet. They have to meet the imminent bodily harm and death standard. You just have the bodily harm and death standard. So one's a threat, and the other's really like inimit, it's going to happen, kind of a thing. Again, whether they're okay with it, I don't have a basis for saying they're not. But whether they live with that every day, they certainly do live with that every single day. In terms of a, a gray area for civil and criminal liability, you know, I just point you back to the Attorney General's opinion and the agencies that ensure and pay the bills when things come up to respond to that. You mentioned that it's temporary legislation, and maybe there'll be clarification. That would be great if, you know, I think everyone would benefit from some clarification. But we don't know whether and when that's going to happen. I have not heard anything changed since the governor's announcement of not holding a special session. And again, we're, we're just speculating, then, to say, at some point in time, this may or may not change. So what do we do in the interim? Are we looking at a year? Are we looking at two? Is there going to be the political momentum for it to change? I don't know any of those things, and you don't either, and that's the problem. We can sit and speculate about it, but we just don't know how the law will or won't change. And you said, who's on the hook when things go south? Yeah. Unfortunately, it's usually the school staff who are on the hook when things go south. And especially since they're the ones who are intervening physically, not the, not the SROs.
Teachers are in a bad spot. They're in a really bad spot. There's, there's entities to blame for that. We won't go into it. As far as some of what your responses were to my questions, a lot of what you're saying to me, the way I understand it or interpret it, is that this kind of thing hasn't happened, and we don't think it will because it hasn't in the past. That doesn't give me much comfort. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying as far as, well, in, in our experience, most fights in the schools don't end up on the ground. I don't, I mean, do we have research to back that up? I have no, I don't know where that comes from, and furthermore, it doesn't matter if, if that's what we've seen in the past. What if that hap, what if that starts happening more? There is more violence in schools nowadays. I think that's probably safe to say. And if there's more violence in schools between students, that means there's more potential for intervention, whether it's teachers or SROs or whatever it is. And if that's the case, there's more of a potential for people to end up on the ground, breaking the statute that was put into place on July 1st, which is a problem. It's, I mean, I'm not trying to just say boo-hoo to the SROs or the cops that respond. I mean, teachers. Look, the, they're, they're working in a disastrous environment in many cases. I mean, there's discipline breakdowns in most schools that we didn't have in the past, for whatever reason. I mean, I don't even want to get into that, but this law certainly adds to that problem, in my personal opinion.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Well, you can come back to me. I've got a few more.
Okay.
If I could just respond to that, and, you know, the, the relevance of the fact that it hasn't happened in the past year is what allows us to say to the city, we're not expecting your SROs to intervene physically unless there is that, you know, clear, what we said is clear threat of physical harm, bodily harm, or death. Otherwise, we're not expecting them to intervene physically. And if they do intervene physically under those circumstances, they then have the protection, because the reasonable force exception in the law applies, including for prone restraints, physical holds, et cetera. That exception overrides. If there is, you know, if we have a reasonable force scenario, that's permitted. And so that's what we're telling them. That's why I think it is relevant. So I'll take next questions.
Okay, so if, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a student that's creating property damage, let's say, or just having some kind of an episode like that, what are we supposed to do with that?
The same thing school staff have to do. We have to stand by and try to intervene in a non-physical manner, using de-escalation techniques and words rather than physically. And sometimes it can be really tough. It really can. And, you know, we see damage happening, but the, the policy of the state, whether you like it, I like it, or anybody up here, or anyone in the room likes it, the current policy of the state is not to intervene physically. And a lot of people would say that's a good thing. Some people, obviously, you're saying that's not a good thing. But property in schools for a long time, for many, many, many years, well, not many, many, so five, roughly five years, the law has been that school staff could not physically intervene in the event of property damage, only in the event of bodily harm.
Louise?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. I'm not done. Okay. I'm, I'm thinking about the, the suggestion that the SROs are in a position where they don't intervene physically. And thinking about that makes me think that there is actually a difference in what the district is considering the purpose and role of an SRO versus what the city is considering the purpose and the role of an SRO. And I'm wondering if that goes back to 2009, or if there's a feeling that something has changed along the way. You know, somewhere we started this, and hopefully the philosophies were closer together. I don't know if there's any background you can give me on that.
Yeah, you know, Louise, what I would share is that I think over the past eight to 10 years, we've really clarified and worked with the cities on what the roles and responsibilities are of our SROs, when they're involved in meetings, when they're involved with conversations, and really streamlining it to be really when it's absolutely necessary that they're involved. Not just part of the administrative team, you know, not breaking up daily fights. That, I mean, the role is clearly defined. And I think Christine Schaefer, who's not able to be here this evening, she would share that working with the SROs has been very positive. Working with the building principals, that we've had positive relationships in terms of everyone understanding what the true role is of our SROs. And again, at the foundation, as we talked about, it is the relationships and knowing the kids and, and having conversations with them, out in the hallways, while they're eating lunch. But actually, I would say, over the last eight to 10 years, we have gotten more clear about what those expectations are.
I just wanted to make a comment to Mark, or Eric, I'm sorry. As a former principal and a special education teacher, we are under those restraint, we, we never have been able to do prone restraints on children, and we do have to let them destroy the room, if that's what they're going to do, and to keep the other children safe. We cannot touch them. We can't not, you know, it's, it's not a good thing to do with a special needs student, especially they get more upset, but they do calm down. There are techniques that everyone's trained in, the administration. There's a team of people who help out, the special ed people, and yes, people do get hurt. I've had people on my staff get hurt. It's minor things. No one's ever been in a situation where they were hospitalized or anything like that. But they have had, you know, injuries to their body and broken glasses and things like that. It's all material things, and it's not as, it's not something that you want to, you know, take a student down and hold them, and that's never done in a school, so.
Yeah, I just want to start off first by saying that I have the utmost respect for all of our SROs, and I, I wish they were still in the middle schools even. But the, the fact remains that the reason that we have our SROs is to be present and to have those relationship buildings. And I don't see this as really changing much from what our SROs were already doing, because it does have that clause in there about the preventing bodily harm. And Eric, when you talked about the fights and students throwing fists at each other, that would be a bodily harm thing. And even if you're talking about a kid that is destroying a room, tearing things up, obviously, the de-escalation would be to get all the other students out of there. But if it ends up in a situation where that student is throwing chairs, which could become a weapon at someone, then we go right back to that, you're preventing bodily harm. So it's really, I see it as a situation where they, they should be held up to the same standards as the teachers. And, you know, de-escalation techniques work. We've been doing them since the beginning of time. I would love to see us somehow be able to work this out, because I do really want to have SROs in our school. They do handle things, you know, when we do need them there for those emergency situations, when there are weapons, like at East Ridge last year with the soft gun situation. That was handled very, very well and quickly, and it was very impressive. But I think right now, you know, this is something that the legislative did to kind of go along with everything else that was happening with lawsuits, with those type of holds in our society, and I, I just hope there's a way that we can work this out.
I, I think focusing on the law, we can't change the law. I mean, we can't change what was voted on. We have nothing. What we have to look at is the situation at hand. Situation at hand is, we have two cities where our high schools are. We have one city that is able to take this law and still provide the high school with SROs. We have one city that has decided to break a contract, do an open meeting, or do a closed session that was not, that went against open meeting laws. And they are the ones that are taking this, and they are the ones that are putting these students at risk. They're the ones that are doing that, not the district, not the legislators, the city that has decided to do this. Because there are multiple cities throughout this state that still have SROs. They still have them in their community. So what we need to get back to is, what are we going to do because of this? We have options. I know there's another city in Washington County that uses Washington County sheriffs as their SROs. That's an option we can look at. Then we don't have to worry about if this partnership, if they've decided to break this partnership, and Woodbury is the one that has decided to wreck this relationship, not the district. The city of Woodbury has decided to wreck this relationship. I think they should be held liable for it. I think that we should go after them. We should get damages. We should seek anything we can, because it is a breach of contract. They gave us no notice. We literally had, what, three days? And then we were told, nope, they're not there anymore. We had no cause, no way to react. So we need to get us out the law, what the law is, hoping that they change it, hoping that anything. We can't hope. We can't wish. We need to act. We need to make sure that our kids are safe in our schools, which they are with or without these SROs. I'm not saying that. But if we can have someone there that these kids can trust, I can tell you right now, I had a child at Park High School with special needs. He was deathly afraid of police officers. He has autism. We got in an accident one time. I could not, they could not get him out of a car because he was deathly afraid of them. He built a relationship with an SRO at Park High School, and he is no longer afraid of police officers. He did have a chance where he needed to be de-escalated. He was walking through the hallway. That officer walked behind him, made sure he was safe, never had to touch him. If he would have went after him or tried to put him in a position because he was hitting the, the walls or something, he would be deathly afraid of police officers still. There are things that we can do, and these SROs are in those schools to build those relationships. They are not there to break up the fights, because I can tell you, the teachers are there because the teachers are right there. The teachers are in the classrooms. They're going to get there before that SRO even has a chance to get there, and they do deal with it. So again, I think we need to stop worrying about what the law is and look at what we can do, and we need to react accordingly.
Thanks. Sumi?
Sure. I mean, I, I agree with Katie that there's no point in discussing what the legislature has done, because that's not in our purview. I did have a couple of questions. Before 2009, in the... Before 2009 and the start of this SRO program, what did we do in our schools?
I didn't know if you had the previous contract. I believe there was a previous contract in place. So we had SROs. We didn't go back to say, when did they start? We just had the most recent contact that renewed yearly in 2009.
Okay.
Or from 2009.
And so what do schools without SROs, so, you know, I'm old enough that SROs did not exist when I was a child. So what do, what do schools that don't have SROs do? And I know that there are some school districts that don't have them as a matter of policy. What do they do to do this kind of relationship building and student safety?
Yeah, I would say when it comes to relationship building, as we met and started the school year off, we talked about with bus drivers, nutrition services, paraprofessionals, custodians, everyone that serves as a school district staff member, we're all responsible for relationships. And depending on the student, it might be that relationship with a custodian. It may be that relationship as they go through the lunch line. And so we continue to build relationships. Relationships are not just the sole responsibility of one person. And I think it takes teachers and staff being out in the hallway, greeting students in the morning so that you can listen to conversations, that you can interact with students. So, you know, when, when we think about safety in South Washington County schools, and obviously, we have a bond coming up that is looking at secured entryways, we have multiple approaches for safety. We have a raptor system that allows for sign in and check in. We have updated cameras for interior and exterior doors. We have a visitor procedure in place when people check in. Obviously, there's the relationships, there's the supervision in hallways. It's more than just one thing. We have safety liaisons. We have deans at a couple of our schools. Looking back at our high school principals, I'm sure I'm forgetting different, we have, you know, hall walkers that are monitoring. So it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach and it's not just one thing when we think about safety in our school district.
And then Mick, a question for you is, so, okay, this is like a very bizarre lead-in, but I know that if you have a trademark and you don't work to protect your trademark, eventually people can, it can become genericized, right? So if we don't, is there any risk to us if we don't pursue damages for breach of contract? Like in the future, are we opening ourselves up to not being able to pursue breach of damages for a contract going forward for some other issue?
Yeah, I think if you sat on your rights for too long, you can lose your rights and, or be deemed to have waived them. And it's unclear under the law how long that would be. I think you certainly could reasonably wait to see if the council's going to take any different action or not to try to work in more of a collaborative manner with the district. And if they're not, then, you know, if you wanted to pursue those rights, I think you certainly could do that. You know, a month or two is not going to end your ability to pursue, particularly if we're putting them on notice that we are not in agreement with the action, that we are reserving our rights to, to bring forward a lawsuit and to recover any damages that necessarily flow from that. And including you'd want to seek your attorney's fees in this kind of a case where it's such an intentional action to walk away from a contract. But I think, again, you could wait reasonably a month or two to do that. And it takes time to draft pleadings and get all that stuff done in any event. Wanted to just take a moment because I, I think it helps sometimes to provide some clarity. I, you know, I don't want to be seen as, you know, I'm one side or another. I'm, I'm just going to read three really short hypotheticals from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, most recent document on this issue because they've really come back and, you know, kind of said, hey, everybody, sort of settle down in terms of what the law really says. And I think these three hypotheticals are short, really kind of help us understand what we're looking at. Hypothetical number one. Officer Josh is an SRO. A student is causing a disturbance in the lunchroom by screaming and throwing food trays on the floor. Because this behavior does not involve a risk of bodily harm or death, Officer Josh may not use force to control the student's behavior or use force to arrest the student for the commission of an offense, even if it appears likely the offense will continue. That makes sense. That's consistent with what we've been talking about. Scenario number two. Officer Londa is an SRO. A student, Lynn, becomes extremely upset after an argument with a peer and begins attacking windows and glass inside the school building with a metal bar. It reasonably appears to Officer Londa that the act of breaking glass and the presence of broken glass is placing Lynn and others in the building at risk of bodily harm. Officer Londa may use reasonable force, if necessary, to restrain Lynn to prevent bodily harm. Also makes sense to us, right? Then the third one. Officer Christie is an SRO. A large adolescent student, Henry, is punching a smaller student, Bailey. Officer Christie may legally use reasonable force, if necessary, to restrain Henry to stop him from harming Bailey. Because Officer Christie is authorized to use reasonable force, she is permitted to utilize prone or compressive restraint with Henry if reasonably necessary under the circumstances. Again, we don't want to encourage that, but if it's necessary, that can be used. And again, reasonably necessary. And so I, I think that sometimes we, we stretch what the changes actually are from, again, the reality of the world.
One, so on that, isn't this what we would have expected prior to this law anyway?
I believe based on the-
On students? I mean, we're talking children, most likely.
Yeah, I believe based on the information I've received from the administration that this is, whether it's our expectation or not, this is how we have been operating with that understanding and that the SROs have done a great job of that too. And that's the reason why we didn't have physical intervention last year.
Number two is our teachers who take care of our kids. We send them there to get an education. And I think that one of, Mick said it best, that the SORs, I've had encounters with the SOR because I had some kids who could have. And it was a very positive outcome. And as a result, they build excellent relationships with those officers in Woodbury. So I just, I, I don't know, Mick, we're going to have to take, put a motion together on what our next step should be. And then we'll go into a discussion of the motion. I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, because I, I guess I'm just confused, maybe not confused, but could you just review for us what all of our, all of our potential options are, right? Because, you know, you had mentioned ending the SRO program, having private security, the council may reconsider, which is not really within our purview. Katie mentioned the Washington County sheriff. But it would just be helpful to have like a comprehensive rundown of what options are truly available to us.
So as I see them, the list that I have running, number one, I think we can send the city a formal request to reconsider and, you know, our offer to have the officers here but not have them physically intervene unless it is clear to the officer. We're not second guessing them unless it's clear to the officer that there's a threat of bodily harm or death. And so that, that I think is a very reasonable approach and I'd hope the council would reconsider that. You have the right to consider the offer just to have officers walk through your buildings. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that does more harm than good and has some legal implications. The, having officers, you know, ending the program and hiring private security, that's an option for you. Again, not one necessarily recommending because from everything I hear, the SROs work. They're doing a good job. They're building those relationships. And we don't want to see people lose their job either because of a lack of funding for that. We can send the council a letter. The board could send the council a letter that I could draft in addition to asking for requesting that they reconsider, you know, preserving our rights to go forward legally and saying that these are the things that we are, you know, we're serious. You can't just walk away from a binding contract. You don't like it, doesn't mean that you just get to say, yep, I'm done with it. We've got to find ways to work through, through issues that arise. You can, you could just sit tight and take no action. You can, you could explore services through Washington County. I don't know whether they have the personnel available to do that. I'm not sure what the options are there or not. So that's something we could certainly explore while we're doing other things. And I think, you know, for some of these things, it's kind of multiple at a time. We're trying to help promote some understanding instead of fear with the council. We're helping to also have an understanding that we're, we're not okay with this kind of unilateral action that happens behind closed doors. I think that giving some time for cooler minds to perhaps prevail, but also recognizing that, again, we're, we're not going to sit on our rights indefinitely either. And so it's your choice what a motion would be, but it, from my perspective, it would probably be, in recommendation, it'd probably be a combination of those things. The letter to the council to reconsider, the letter to the council that we're preserving our rights and, you know, what our concerns are and basically outlining some of the information that I provided here today. And then just so that, you know, if the council says pound sand to us, I think we need to explore what the other options are meanwhile, in case they do that. And the council could do that. And we could sue for specific performance, we could do other things. But meanwhile, we have to think about what those other options are. So I think we should at least, you know, task administration with looking, beginning to explore some of those. Hopefully, we don't need to do that because, again, I, I know everybody values the SROs that are actually in the buildings.
Okay. I think my recommendation would be to, as Mick suggested, is to send a letter. And I, I have been in contact with the Woodbury mayor and she is willing to meet with us. So I think that, that would be the first option. And then we can move on from that after what, to see what they say. Anybody else have any other suggestions?
I think we do need to add in, as Mick suggested, that we do have the right to-
Yes.
-go into litigation. And I do also think that we should have administration looking into other options because we don't know how long all this conversations could take. And the longer we wait to do something, if other schools or do it, or we don't want to lose out on an option that, and if they never come back, then at least we know that we do have other options.
Option, yeah. And the concerns also is one that we want to put in there. Eric, I saw you. Did you?
Yeah. I agree with you, Chair Vanley. I think a letter's a good first step. And hopefully, we can, we can make some headway with this partnership. I'm not going to say a whole lot else because I think I probably said too much already, but I just, I just wanted to just clarify one thing, I guess. We talk about the difference between, for example, a child committing property damage versus creating a bodily safety risk to themselves or another student. And Mick, you laid out some hypothetical scenarios to kind of illustrate those differences and the decisions that are made by people that are dealing with those situations. And those are, those scenarios are interest, I mean, not hard to believe or understand. I mean, they're, they're something that, that could happen. But the problem with reality is that sometimes it's up to people to determine what exactly started and how it started after the fact. And oftentimes, those individuals are biased based on the ultimate result of the situation. So it could be that somebody steps in because they feel like this person's creating a safety risk to others, things go very badly, and then suddenly someone's being prosecuted and because somebody said, nah, they were just committing property damage. And then we're going to go with that. This is, this is the kind of, I guess, uncertain circumstances that I think the city of Woodbury is concerned about. And look, I'm not a special pleader for the city of Woodbury. I'm not a special pleader for any municipality by any means. But what I'm trying to do is, I don't want them to be made into the enemy here because they're not the enemy here, okay?
I hear you. I hear your passion. I hear you. I know you're passionate.
And Eric, I have to say the same thing. This is not about them being the enemy at all.
Or, or-
As we have talked, what I'm disappointed in, a decision as big as taking an SRO out of our schools, there was not any consultation with any member of our district administration. Zero, not one. The notice was posted on Friday. We got a call on Tuesday. We asked about an invitation to attend. That was not, that was not offered to us. And so this is what we're left with. And I agree with you completely. If we can go back to the table and sit down and talk about it, I absolutely think, I think the SROs are great. I don't think that they're enjoying their work right now, sitting offsite, you know, waiting for someone to call. So that has always been our goal and will remain our goal. And at the heart of all of that is the safety of our kids. And when you can show up on Friday and tell us that on Monday you're going to pull the SROs out, it really leaves some question in my mind around the safety of students. Regardless of law, regardless of everything else, how this occurred was unacceptable and it can't happen again. Working together is not being told something. It's working together. It's both people, both parties at the table.
Thank you, Julie. I appreciate that. And I don't dispute that this process probably wasn't done correctly. Don't dispute that whatsoever. I just want everybody to understand, and if I haven't made the point clearly enough, I'm going to make it again because I think it's prudent to do so. This entire situation was created by people in St. Paul. Period. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, can I say one more? Oh, Pat?
I just would like, included in the letter are concerns, like Julie was stating, so that they're aware of why we're concerned about this. And we're not trying to be, you know, aggressive or anything. We just want them to know our point of view.
Melinda?
I just wanted to say regarding the, the fear of stories being, you know, one she said, he said kind of thing about if a fight broke out or anything, not only do we have cameras in our schools as well and we're looking at increasing that as well, but I can't think of one job where there's not risk of lawsuits. You know, I mean, obviously, there's harder, more risk in things like police officers. Think of doctors and surgeons that are there saving our families, our children every day. They are at major risk of lawsuits and they still do it for the sake of our children.
All right, I thought you were going to say something. So Mick, do you have your marching orders there?
I think you have, first, did you vote on that?
Yeah, we're going to make a motion.
I think I have, I understand the motion if you-
Okay. So can you kind of summarize it and then I'll call for the vote?
My understanding is that the substance of the motion is for to direct the administration and council for the board to send a letter to the city council outlining or outlining the board's concerns and under, helping the council understand the board's full point of view. And then also that we remain willing to meet. We are interested in looking at other options. Give some reasonable period of time to do that. But at the same time, we are preserving our rights to-
Our legal rights.
-move forward, our legal rights to move forward in the event that we can't find an amicable solution. And I think, again, really emphasizing, I, I think it's true, the, the city's not the bad folks here. They have their concerns. We understand their concerns. We have our concerns, but we, we can't just walk away from contracts.
Okay, thank you. Everybody understand the motion now? Okay, I'm going to call for the motion. Are those in favor?
We, nobody's made the motion or seconded yet.
Okay. Can I, can I get a, a motion to accept the mo-
Second.
Move right, Katie. Second by Sumi? Okay. Any discussion or comments?
I do have a question. Is there a timeframe that would be considered on the letter? Or did I miss that? For them to respond or for them to say, let's meet?
Yeah, I, I think we'd certainly invite them to meet as quickly as possible or at least, you know, a subset. I understand we have open meeting law issues we have to be mindful of and the councils as a whole might have to meet again. To discuss the matter as well. But I, I think we'll give them, give a reasonable period of time, certainly, you know, a month. But I, I don't know that I would go more than two months without commencing legal action if, if we couldn't get some resolution. I think that, that, that would be my outside timeline for sure. And you can give me other timelines if you want, but that'd be the latest I'd wait to try to give time to resolve the matter.
Okay.
Everybody agree that's reasonable?
Is that the, is that the amount of time that best preserves our?
Yeah, I'd be concerned if you went longer than two months that you, that on your rights too long. I, I think that it's an important issue. And also, you know, lawsuits take time. As I mentioned, it takes time to draft them, to commence them, to go through them. And so all that while, we may be without an SRO. So the other thing is we're going to look at those options too, behind the scenes, to see what other options might exist.
And that's a reasonable amount of time for the council-
And that's a reasonable amount of time for the council to-
I think certainly within two months, that's plenty of time.
Do we think two months is, I mean-
Perhaps too long.
Not to go back, but they were able to make this decision and gave us three days that we, that these people were being pulled out. I wouldn't want to go more than 30 days to give them to respond. If they were able to post it on, on, notify us on the 5th, vote on the 6th, that they were taking them out, and they were out by-
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah. Certainly, I think 30 days is reasonable.
I don't think they need two months if they can do that in that amount of time.
Yep, certainly, I think 30 days is reasonable if you want to establish that timeline.
Is that agreeable with the board, 30 days? Agreeable.
Agreeable. Can I suggest something?
Sure.
Is there something that can be done in the interim, maybe as a temporary measure? The city has offered to have walkthroughs, maybe not a bad idea.
I think, I think that will be up to, I'm going to leave that up to Julie and the, and her cabinet, and because they know what their needs are, and they can work with the principals.
That would be a board motion that I believe we would have to-
Okay, let's take, let's-
If we want, if we don't, I, I'm, I am against, so I would not want that happening.
I have serious legal concerns about it as well.
I do not, yeah. I would not want that to be happening, so if we could finish this motion, and then if we can-
Let's finish. Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, the motion carried. Now, what is the other motion that you want? So you make it.
I would like to make the motion that we do not have. Well, we don't let anyone just walk through our hallways, and I don't believe that police officers should be any different to that. If they are not going to be SROs in our schools, then they should not be in the school unless we call them for a reason that they need to be in the school.
And are you fine with them being at special events, though, whichever event is in public?
Yes, special events they have been to that are outside of the SROs for, I mean, since I went to school at Park.
And I think, I think what we were talking about is for the, what I believed was, was due, with Julie and the cabinet, was to look at other options, not to take them, but to lay out on the table. Meantime, here's some options that we could go move forward with.
Right, but, but we don't want, I am not for, so I would like to make the motion that that is not.
Should, should we make the motion in, in an affirmative way, instead of, "I'm not in favor"? Would you like me to make the motion that says, "I am in favor of walkthroughs"? Does that make it more clear, I guess?
I already made the motion. Eric.
Okay, so I just, so what am I saying to that? No or yes? I don't know.
But we need a second. You second it?
No, I don't second.
He's against what I said, so I've already made-
So, one way you could word the motion is to say, "I, I move to reject the city's offer to have walkthroughs by officers through the building." And that way, if you're voting yes, you know you're voting to reject that offer, and if you vote-
Okay.
Okay, so, I make the motion the way Mick just said.
Can I just share that I don't want to confuse people? That was not the city council's offer. The city council's offer that was brought back to us did not include that. That was when we were in conversation about other potential things. And so if you're talking about the interim, then, you know, you can take mixed legal advice, but that was not part of what was negotiated and that was, what was shared with us. It was an option that was discussed, but did not come from the city council.
Did the city council have a, have an offer that they did make to us?
It was around large events. Football games, basketball games.
That, it was just that, okay?
Okay.
Can, can I, I, I just, because-
Can we get a second on my motion, and then that would be when we would make the motion?
Perfect.
Okay, can we get a second?
Melinda seconded it.
Melinda seconded it. Okay, all those in favor?
No.
Any discussion? Okay, now Eric.
I guess my, my question is, is, okay, so we vote on this. This completely takes this off the table in any form.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, how do we know what form? I, I mean, so, so are you, I mean, if we vote, if this is, if this gets voted as a yes, meaning we reject whatever the proposition for-
Walking through.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that a police officer must be called to respond to the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's insane. What if they see something as they're driving by the school? I mean, what, what if there's some other circumstance whereby they feel the need to respond for whatever reason? I mean, we, we, you just, you just can't, you can't make this motion kind of willy-nilly and just hope it works out.
It would not reject an officer from seeing a kid stealing a bike, from going and grabbing and saying, "You can't steal the bike." It's just like, if, if something's happening at my house, I don't have to call the police. If they drive by and see it, they would stop. We're not saying that. What we're saying is, we don't want them showing up at 10 o'clock, "I'm walking the hallways." At 1 o'clock, "I'm walking the hallways." That's what we're rejecting. A police officer is bound by their duty that if they see something, something happening, they would have to do something. This is not what we're saying. We're saying, we do not want a police officer to just walk through the doors and walk through the hallways.
So they're not-
We don't let parents do it. We don't let, I can't, as a school board member, I can't walk into the school and just walk the hallways. I have to be checked in. I have to go through the steps. That's all we're saying. But I don't know how this would say a police officer can't stop if a fight's happening in the hall, if a fight's happening outside and they see it, they're going to be able to stop that fight from happening.
I understand that, but I just, that's why, that's why I wanted to clarify, because when I first asked, you know, and you, I said, "Do they need to be called there?", and you were shaking your head, "Yes." And I said, "Well, that, that's-"
If a fight's happening inside, they're not going to see it. So yes, we would have to call a police officer to have them come in to do it.
Perhaps they could be notified in another way. I don't know.
And what other way would they be notified?
Kid comes running out, squad cars driving by the parking lot, I don't know.
Well, I, I'm guessing that a principal would let them into the school and say, "Hey, there's something going on in the school."
Perhaps one way around this is to state that, we could phrase it to state that officers are not authorized to conduct regular walkthroughs.
Yeah.
And again, understanding that an officer sees something, hears something, is informed of something, receives a call, they're going to come in and respond to an emergency situation or a crime that's either happening or reported to be about to happen, but they're not authorized to conduct regular walkthroughs.
Yeah. So Eric, can I ask you, what is the, for the regular walkthroughs, like, what do you, what are you envisioning as the, as the positive benefit of it?
I don't know what I'm envisioning, but I, I think, you know, I'm not just talking about, you know, random beat officer from, you know, Northside, Woodbury beat, you know, walking through East Ridge or whatever. But certainly, they have the, the SROs that are now in this juvenile investigations position that they've kind of put them in temporarily. So I don't understand the issue with, if the city's okay with it, and the police department's okay with it, having them doing some walkthroughs that are already known to the kids. Why not put them back in there if the city and the police department's okay with it? If they're not under contract by the, by the school, and they're being paid solely by the police department, it seems to me that does alleviate to some extent the liability placed on them by the legislation. Maybe not all the way, I don't know, but it, it does alleviate some of it, and these people are already known to the kids, and I don't know.
So I guess the question, the questions I would have would be around, how does this, how does that foster the relationship building that's part of the SRO program?
It doesn't. It's a stopgap measure until we can get this mess figured out.
And then if they're, if they're, if they're not in the building constantly, you know, like, if something doesn't, if they're, okay, it's the 10 a.m., they're doing the walkthrough, and something happens at noon and they're not there, is that just kind of a false sense of security, because there's not an SRO who's in the building the whole time? That would be my concern.
I mean, the SROs aren't necessarily in the building all day long, every day anyway. I mean, they, they're doing other things, investigating various-
Shouldn't the SROs be in the building all day, every day?
It is my understanding that they are not always in the building. Sometimes they're off at training.
Okay.
They are absent.
Sometimes they, they're, I mean, they investigate crimes that occur in the school, so they have to interview people on one side of the school.
Question. Since there was no proposal by the city to do walkthroughs, would the board consider just giving our superintendent the authority to sit down with the city and whatever has worked out in the interim, trust that that will be well done? Because I certainly do. I don't want to take anything off the table totally. There's no proposal here to reject. I, I would rather see Julie authorized to, to install whatever means in the interim she sees fit.
I think that's what I said. Oops.
I, I agree, I agree with Louise. I think, I think it's a mistake to, to make a motion and vote on something banning some sort of activity or banning some sort of program, temporary program or whatever you want to call it, temporary measure. I think that's a mistake. You know, if we, if we want to authorize her to do something or whatever, fine. Taking something off the table, I'm with Louise. I don't think that's a good idea.
All right, where are we at now?
Call for the vote.
Okay, let's just call for the vote, and then see where it leads us. All those in favor, say aye.
Wait, wait, can you, what is the motion on the table? To not, to not, Mick, can you, you word it better?
Yeah.
Not authorize Woodbury police officers to conduct regular walkthroughs.
Just regular walkthroughs.
Yeah.
Nothing else, just regular walkthroughs.
As, as opposed to rejecting a proposal that now says that we're not going to authorize? Okay.
Wait, say that again, Louise?
So, so as opposed to saying it's rejecting something, it's just saying that's something we're specifically not going to authorize?
We're not authorizing at this time.
So a yes vote says, I don't-
We're just not authorizing.
We're not authorizing it.
Yes.
A no vote says, "I don't like it."
One, one thing I want us to think about in the interim is the difference between if it's a regular patrol officer off the street, or if it's our existing, if it's Rudy or Ashley who currently serve our students, and is there a difference there? Because while it's the start of the school year, we know that from previous years, and Rudy happens to be new at Woodbury High School, but perhaps there is a way to think about that in terms of, in the interim, we talked about a month, and then after that month, we would have to make different decisions. I guess for me, it's working with our high school leaders, our SROs, the city, and having the conversation about what could that look like. But I would say we definitely would have to be guaranteed that they're the existing SROs, and they're not just a street patrol. That, to me, would serve no purpose at all. At least there is some connection that they have to the kids at school. And so Mick, I don't know your legal guidance as it relates to someone who has already developed relationships in the school, if it's scheduled, what your legal thoughts are there?
I, I, I do still have the same concerns that I mentioned earlier, and one of them too is, again, are we creating this subterfuge where it's, we're saying wink, wink, nod, nod, you're not under contract, come on in, but we expect you to do the same thing. Does that really help that SRO in a, in the event of a lawsuit? I don't know. I'd rather rely on the reasonable force exceptions that are clear in the law, but that's probably a bigger concern for the city side to think about. I think that we'd have to be, have something in writing in terms of, with the city, why it is and when it is that the officers can, those SROs only can be in our schools, because again, we do not want to open up our forum to say that, you know, anybody, including an officer, can just come in and walk through whenever they want. Like you aptly said, even board members can't just come in and walk through the schools. We, we have a lot of protections for a lot of reasons, and we want to make sure that those kids feel comfortable and are incented to come to school and not disincented. So I think we can work through it, but I, I'd want to make sure we were clear in our understanding and expectation with the city of how we might work through that.
Mick, one question for you. Without this motion, have we authorized anyone to walk through our schools? If, if there is no motion?
We haven't. If the motion fails, we have, we still haven't authorized them. They've just, haven't.
Okay.
And again, you could, the alternative is to say, you know, you could just say, "We're going to task your superintendent, who is your manager, your day-to-day, you know, CEO, with making these types of decisions if you wanted to."
Mick, you just, you said something interesting. You said that you're uncomfortable with the idea of, of having the, the former SROs, you know, just kind of doing the same thing, or trying to do the same thing as a, as a, as a temporary measure without being agents of the school, being paid by solely the police department. You said that still doesn't really help out their situation, or I'm not really sure how you phrased it. You said it doesn't really, I guess, cover their liability. You're illustrating my point. You're illustrating my point, this, my point that I've been trying to make this entire evening. As far as the city of Woodbury is concerned, is that the situation has changed with this law. The situation for what they are, what they can do, keeping themselves safe from not just civil liability, but criminal liability, has changed. And you illustrated it by what you just said right there. Because if you're uncomfortable putting them in there, because they can still be considered agents of the school, even if they're not receiving a paycheck from the school, then there's a problem. There's a problem. And I, I just, people need to understand that. There is a massive problem. And I know some cities are interpreting it differently, but law interpretation, you know, that continues on until somebody's in jail, and then things spiral out of control.
Let's get back to business at hand here. So we have a motion, and that is, we do not authorize, who? Anyone walkthroughs by this, by the Wood, yes. So, any more discussion on that? I just lost my train of thought here. That wasn't a stipulation anyway with the city of Woodbury. That wasn't even in, but-
That wasn't the proposal.
No, no.
It was an item that was discussed in our meeting.
Yes.
It was discussed at the Friday meeting, as an option.
As, right. And so, my point is this. Pass this motion. We're only looking at it for 30 days or less, hopefully. The city of Woodbury has already offered to have a meeting. The sooner the better. So why don't we just pass this, keep things clean, neat, until we can figure it out?
And Sharon, when you said the city of Woodbury offered to have a meeting-
Mm-hmm.
-through the mayor?
Through the mayor. She had, she has contacted me. And my, my, my response was, "Contact our superintendent." So that was no later than this morning, I think it was. So we'll, if, if they're willing to, to move forward with our superintendent and our, our legal counsel, I think that would be our best option. So let's, I'm done talking? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
No.
Okay.
Or no, or whatever.
Okay. One nay and?
Nope, two.
Two.